Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, January 12. If you are watching live on Monday, January 12, we encourage you to call in with comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. Our next regular meeting is on Monday, January 26 at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. And as always, you can watch us live on Verizon or Cablevision. And you can also catch us with a live webcast as well as an on-demand webcast thereafter at PCTV76.org. So I had a couple of announcements to start with. The first one I wanted to mention is that I went on Friday night to the annual installation, dinner, and ceremony for the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And it is an occasion every year when the leadership of the ambulance corps is established or renewed and that members who have performed exemplary service during the year are honored. It's one of those evenings that reminds you that our friends and neighbors are getting out of their homes, getting out of their beds at night, often over a thousand times in the course of a year to assist people who need an ambulance call. So many, many, many thanks to the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps and all the folks who were involved in it, including, I'm happy to say, quite a number of young Pleasantville residents who have gotten involved. And thanks, as always, to the captain, Krista Kalatzinsky, and to the entire Wind family, of which she is a part, who have been anchors for the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps for a very, very long time. So an impressive entirely volunteer venture and happy to honor them on Friday night. Couple of other things to mention. One is, I don't know how many of you are in the loop on the Pleasantville Music Festival, which has been scheduled for July 11, but we have a planning committee that is up and running in a big way. We encourage you to go to the new website, which is PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. Take a look on that site. You'll have the opportunity to click into a bunch of other resources, including signing up for their email list, signing up for linking back to their Facebook page, all kinds of things going on. They have some fundraising ventures going as well as some early opportunities to take advantage of discounts. So those of you who are interested, or I think you might be interested in the music festival, are encouraged to volunteer, but most importantly, get the to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com and sign yourself up. An easy way to stay in touch. And speaking of staying in touch, two things to note, as we have noted a number of times in the past, but there's still a lot of people that haven't done it. We have two things we wish you would do. One is to go to the Pleasantville government website, which is Pleasantville-NY.gov, and click on the left column on Code Red. Code Red is a service we have contracted with to establish emergency communications with residents in the event of a significant emergency. We will not be using it for any other purpose. Hopefully, years will pass without our ever touching it. But our experience in the aftermath of Sandy made clear that it is tough to get in touch with people whose power is out, whose phone is out, who may be staying with friends or in a hotel and are not being reached in the normal way. If you click into Code Red, you can sign up to be contacted by email, by text message, by landline phone, by cellphone, by alternate phone, any way you want to do it. So it's a big, big help to us. Lots of people have already done it, but lots haven't. So Pleasantville-NY.gov, click on Code Red. While you're there, you can also click on Subscribe to News, and that will give you the opportunity to receive whatever you choose to receive from the village, including agendas for the various boards and commissions, zoning, planning, architectural review board, various notices of a general nature, reminders about water bills, et cetera. So it's a great way to stay in touch, a great way not to miss something that's going on. So I encourage you to get yourselves to Pleasantville-NY.gov and think about those two different things. Farm market continues to rock and roll on Saturdays now, the winter market in the Pleasantville Middle School. That's a great spot to come visit. And thanks again to the folks at Foodchester, our not-for-profit partner that runs the farm market, and also thanks to the Pleasantville Union Free School District, which has been very helpful in making it possible for the farm market to continue in the winter in the middle school. Then lastly, there was an event at the library last Tuesday, which was the first of a series that'll be run by Pleasantville Strong, which is a local group working on a coalition effort to think about ways to combat drug and alcohol abuse. The first of the regular events at the library took place this past Tuesday, and they'll be running an event at 7:00 PM at the library on the first Tuesday of every month. So it's an opportunity for people who are interested in the problems that may exist in our community and in our region to check in on that and to participate in that brainstorming about things we might do about it. Pleasantville Strong is working towards applying for a grant that would provide a significant infusion of cash to the Pleasantville Strong Coalition to develop programs and provide new ways of trying to tackle these problems. So really, a bunch of committed people doing good work and also providing some opportunities for people to inform themselves better about the lay of the land and aspects of the problem that parents may want to know about. The next event in February, again, the first Tuesday in February, is focused on the subject of synthetic marijuana, which is a new and problematic piece of the drug picture. And any of you who are familiar with it in a general way or haven't heard of it have an opportunity to come and hear more about that, too. So mark that on your calendar. They have a Facebook page. If you Google Pleasantville Strong, you'll be sent directly to it. Anybody else have anything on the report?
I do actually have one announcement. As everybody knows, there's going to be an election coming up, March 18. And after four terms, I am not going to be running for reelection. So I wanted to make people aware that for twofold one, so that if anybody was on the fence and thinking about wanting to do it, that come forth. And second of all, to offer myself up as a resource, because I know that this is an important position and can be intimidating from the outside. And I'd be happy to work with you, talk to you about it, give you insight into it, keep it confidential if that's what you desire. Anything that might be needed from your standpoint to help you make a decision. It's very rewarding. There are aspects of the election that might be questioned that you might want to question about. Certainly, aspects of what it's like to sit in this chair for three years. All I can tell you is that it's well worth it. We need good people. People are dedicated to this community to step forward and to take on this role. And I want to give people, I didn't want to spring this on people at the last minute. Give people a chance to think about it and to do some research, and hopefully, we'll get at least one or two people that are interested in doing this. Myself, my seat's up. Colleen, I believe, seats up, and the mayor's seat is running for reelection. So there's three people, three chairs open for reelection, and I wanted to at least let the community know that after four terms, this seat will be up for sure.
I feel we should leave it vacant in your honor.
Well, I mean, I didn't say it was going to be easy shoes to fill, but...
Huge shoes to fill.
But nonetheless, there is a natural passing of the baton that needs to happen, and the time's right. So please feel free to reach out to me on this. I'm more than happy to talk. It's important to me that we get good people to take, to step in. So I'm happy to be available.
Likewise. Thank you, Jonathan, not only for your service, but for that useful offer to the community. Judy, can we make sure we have links on our site to the state election commission and the county election commission? Sometimes the process by which one files petitions and the deadlines and all of that are hard to get to, but it's pretty clearly laid out on the Westchester County Board of Elections site and the State Board of Elections site. The election, as Jonathan mentioned, the mayor and two trustee seats is on March 18, but the deadlines for filing a petition, if you were interested in running, are sometime in early February. The dates are all outlined on those sites.
Yeah, so it's not like you have until March 18 to decide. You got to get paperwork in. It's not overly onerous, but it is a step in the process and something that needs to be completed by February 10.
So in the hypothetical that Jonathan is not drafted back into the seat by winning on write-in votes, we'll have more to say. We'll have more to say. We'll have more to say on his service.
I was just watching The Godfather III.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other announcements, comments, et cetera?
I'll just follow up with what Jonathan said. Having just done this last year, I'm also, I'll make myself available for anybody who's interested in doing this as well. Everybody here has a lot more experience in this than I do, but I did just go through this having never been a municipal official before, so I might be able to add some color to the whole thing. So let me know as well.
Thank you, sir.
I will obviously defer to the great...
Oh, yeah.
Are there comments from the public?
I told him I wasn't.
Here's your moment.
Always the gentleman.
Enter and sign in, please.
Hi, Steve O'Neil, 215 Edgewood Avenue. I just came down to try to get an update on what's going on with the funeral home property on Washington. It is in...
Disrepair.
Beyond disrepair. It is unattended to. It is dangerous. It is an embarrassment. I didn't think anything would look worse than the funeral home.
Right.
And they've managed to accomplish it. So I'd love an update.
So Steve is referring to the former Maher Funeral Home and the house next to it that's at the corner of Edgewood and Washington Avenue. So the property was sold to a new owner, and they have been through the planning commission process and have all the approvals to build the building. There were some discussions going on that required some negotiation with the village board, and I think have been brought to, I hope, a successful close. Patty and I met with John Saracino, who is the new owner, the week before Christmas, and he assured us that he would pull a demolition permit and would be demolishing the buildings soon, and then thereafter going head to build. We can't compel him to do that, but I certainly have a handshake that he is going to, and we're staying on top of that.
He did put up a wooden structure to hold the electrical box. I believe I saw that on Saturday. So that was wishful, hopeful at least, that he is going to start the demolition, because that's the first thing you do.
Do you bet anybody that, I mean, this is the second property on Washington Avenue.
To go derelict, and that the other one has also...
It's sold. I'm happy to work on it.
We have news on that.
Performance bonds or something?
Well, in the case of 98 Washington, that's the other building, the one that was so long vacant and really never finished. The whole tortured story involving some legal shenanigans on the part of the previous owners, the building went into foreclosure, it was in the hands of a bank, unimaginably, despite our beating on them repeatedly, you know, these banks don't even answer the phone sometimes when people are trying to buy it. The good news about 98 Washington, that's the mostly finished but never completed building, is that it actually closed and is now in the hands of a new private owner as of about three weeks ago. So hopefully, we'll see progress very quickly because they have a substantial amount of money invested in it. In the case of the Maher Funeral Home, the owner appeared to be moving along quickly and then decided to ask for some accommodations, which we weren't really in a position to offer, but we've made clear what we were able to do and what we weren't. He agreed that he was accepting of that. Patty, has he actually pulled the demo permit?
It's waiting for him. I had a conversation with him as late as 3:00 this afternoon. He said by the end of the month, it'll be done.
Okay.
So, you know, we're hoping that...
It'll be done as far as demo?
Demo, yeah.
It won't take much, as you know better than I do.
Let me just address your issue about the bond. We do require performance bonds if there's public assets involved in the development, like roads or water or sewer infrastructure, but since the site plan is only all private utilities, there's nothing we could bond. So if it was a subdivision where they're putting in the roadways, the water, the sewer, the drainage, those things get bonded.
Somebody comes into the town and doesn't have the money to, buys the property and doesn't have the money to do anything, nothing the town could do.
I mean, we can and do enforce safety requirements and all that. That obviously is a struggle in a condition like the Maher Funeral Home or the 98 Washington. But, I mean, blessedly, you know, communities like ours have not had the same problem that's existed in various places upstate where you end up with properties that are actually not economic to develop and the property owners just abandon them. But, you know, what's happened to us...
It's a zombie of properties.
Right. What's happened to us in 98 Washington is that the property ended up in foreclosure, and there were a bunch of legal issues, and it just took forever to get the bank to resolve them, take a haircut on what it was owed, and get the thing back into private hands. Happily, it's now happened. In this case, I think the issue was different, but the property owner has quite a bit of money invested in this at this point, so it's hopefully a substantial incentive for him to move forward. As you probably know, it's a three-story building with apartments above and office below. He reports his intention that he will occupy the first floor with his own company. So hopefully, that's also a positive sign. Can't guarantee it.
But I also, you know, you asked about, when they pull a building permit, there is a sunset clause on that or not? They can build, they could pull a building permit and sit with it for how long?
Do they expire?
Some of the approvals will expire.
Right. If you don't act on your...
The permit stays open for probably a year, but some of the approvals could require...
Well, if it's a, if you need a zoning variance, that would expire.
Right.
But some of them don't, and you can, they can sit there with it, which is not what you want.
But he can't leave...
They can demo it.
Yeah, the property can't stay in that condition. I mean, if he doesn't act on it, we will issue summonses, and he's going to have to answer to those. So, I mean, he just can't leave it. It's just...
In that condition, that's it right now.
Right.
So I guess, I mean, I guess there's nothing really that you could do, but I would encourage somebody from the town to go over there and do a little maintenance. I mean, that gate is open. That gate is open. So any kids can walk in, walk into that house, and that house is in serious disrepair.
Well, that, we need to compel him to lock the gate.
We can't do any side maintenance on that.
We can make him do it.
Well, we'll put him on notice, for sure.
We could notice something about it, but we, the village cannot go over there and...
And even maintaining along the street. I mean, it's just, it's a mess, if you want it.
Well, that, that we can do. That, Patty, along the right of way, by the curb, we can take care of that.
Let's continue that discussion with him tomorrow. I mean, you're not the first...
I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
You're the first to come to a board meeting, but I've talked to a couple of your neighbors, similar concerns and perfectly understandable, same concern of ours. So if, if what we're being told is accurate, it will be demolished soon, and that, of course, will create a new appearance problem. What we all want to see happen is for the building to be demolished and for him to start building right away and build this thing. So, you know, we're certainly going to be pressing, and as I say, Patty and I met with him for an hour or so, about two weeks ago.
If he could just stay close to it.
We will.
I've heard rumors, and only rumors, that he's out trying to sell the property. So stay closer.
We wouldn't know. We would not know that.
I know, but all I'm asking is if you can pay attention and stay close to it, because it's going down the same exact route that the one across the street went through.
Right.
And the one across the street had site plans and went through the planning department. That's...
So any intention you could pay to it would be much appreciated by...
We shall. And we'll stay in touch with you, too.
So what are you going to do, Jonathan?
I think he's going to come to all...
I hope he doesn't write a book.
I think he's going to come to all...
Only for the school board.
Oh, no.
That I would like to see.
I would like to see that, too.
Oh, no. I love it.
Wait, hold on, I have to pick Shane up off the ground.
You know, I think we'll generate some violation notices, just to put him on notice.
I don't know if it's true, but I heard he signed a movie contract.
Oh, Jonathan?
Yeah.
That would surprise me. We have to give a lifetime trustee a chief.
All right.
Well, you're going to be sorely missed, Jonathan.
Any further comments from the public? No members of the public here now, but again, our call-in number is 769-1677. While you consider the question of whether you have anything to call us about, let's go to the resolutions. Mindy, the first resolution of 2015, number one.
Wow, is it the first one? I feel like I was just here, we were here last week.
We had a work session last week.
We were here. Resolved at the pre-check register dated January 12, 2015, covering electronic check numbers 1849 through 1902, and pre-check numbers 79547 through 79654 have been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund, $156,495.55. The water fund, $6,733.72. The capital fund, $200. The research fund, $11,177.83. The pool fund, $16.19. Trust and agency fund, $1,797, for a total of $1,776,420.29.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Colin Wagner, who was not able to be here tonight, sent a couple of questions, which we discussed with Patty and I think have resolved. She can follow up later. One piece of this, I'm reminded to report, we had a minor expense to duplicate keys for the new senior bus. Our new senior jitney bus has arrived.
It has.
And...
Looks great.
It looks great. It's, I think, going to be a great service to our senior programs, including a much better mechanism for people to get in and out of an easier route, so...
I had a quick question. I hate to keep beating up on these guys, but this A1 Computer Services guys, they charged us $2,000 again. Do they bill us by hour?
They do bill us by hour.
Right. And so the kinds of things that they're doing are network issues or when they come over for...
It depends on, yeah, or reconnecting new computers. When we hire, when we buy new computers, they put us back into the local area network.
You find them pretty responsive?
They're very good.
Yeah.
We've had others, and we find them to be not only available but efficient. And I know it's expensive, but it...
Yeah, it just seems like...
We can't, we really, we really are so...
How often do you think they come over?
Probably three times a week, I would say, if not here and most of our other work sites. They're around at least three times a week, depends on what the issues are.
And they send in voice detailing what they do?
They do.
Yeah.
These don't take guys across the street?
No.
No, A1, they work out of Elm Street. You know, they have to be certified in all of our servers and the level of...
And so for the benefit of those watching, the village has no on-staff IT resources, so we use an outsourced company.
Although we tinker. We can do little things without calling them, and we don't call them for everything.
You're under the desk?
Yeah, we do. We've done a lot.
Switching the plugs, yes. I know that...
We set up a few things. Noreen is excellent. She's, she did it for the Navy. She knows the way around.
All right. So we'll be looking for reduced budget line in our computer support services. If our radar rate goes down, so they'll bring that back up.
The Pleasantville Early Warning System on the earth.
Code Red goes down, and the Marines threw you all over it.
The British works, but there is a Russian bomber over there.
She's very good. She was a Marine, actually. The Marines.
She was a Marine?
Oh, Marines, okay.
Oh, boy, don't make that mistake.
Yes, very bright, very good.
All right.
Hidden talents, hidden talents of your staff.
Once a Marine, always a Marine. The one that didn't want the mix in there.
Let the record show, yes.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you, Steve.
With that, all in favor? I'll respectfully go on aye. Jonathan, number two.
Resolved at the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, December 22, 2014, and they're hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number three, Jonathan.
No.
I mean, Stephen.
This is the 25-4, right?
No, you're, this is 2015-3. You got to go past the minute.
Sorry, resolved at the Board of Trustees, hereby accepts the following donations to the Senior Center for Senior Programs. Anonymous donor number one, $320. Anonymous donor number two, $2,000. And Rose Stanton for $100.
Is there a second?
Second. Nice.
As we say blessedly, frequently, our senior programs generate this kind of generosity, and we very, very, very much appreciate it, and pledge to use this money thoughtfully. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Mindy?
Resolved at the polling place for the Wednesday, March 18, 2015 village election shall be located at Village Hall, AD Willard Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, and the hours of said election shall be from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Maybe you should have abstained.
Don't wait.
Those hours can be changed. I was just going to say, we normally, if it's, we can move it to 6:00 AM, like, or 6:30. These are the minimum hours that we are allowed to do. And I'm just being optimistic.
Okay. All right. Number five, Steve.
Jonathan, resolved at the Board of Trustees, hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the pool concession agreement with Bob DeBruno for 2015, 16, and 17 summer seasons.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Robert DeBruno is the concessionaire who runs the snack bar at the pool. He has done so for quite a period of time. The folks over on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board with the assistance of Linda Belafoto, our Parks, our Rec Superintendent, have been discussing the menu items, aiming to improve the array of options and to provide more healthy options. And correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, the menu that's now appended to this as a sample menu reflects those concerns.
Yes, it does.
It's a three-year contract, but the village has the option to terminate it if for any reason should need to do so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to talk about Colleen's comments?
Well, I think we addressed them. She had been concerned about the question of, of performance of providing the menu items and making sure they were in stock, but Patty reports that we have obviously the leverage in the event that we had a problem to change horses if we had to.
If we had to.
But there's every reason to think that the discussions with him have been fruitful and it worked.
And we've worked with him for a long time?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I had one quick comment on that, that is he incorporated at all? The contract is with him as an individual. Does he have a business behind him?
I think it's a small, you know, if he is, it's...
Very family-oriented, and he does other, at other pools, and it's just a small business.
I was just surprised that he's not, doesn't have an LLC there or something that is, I mean, normally this guy...
He is insured. I don't know under what capacity, but he is, has a...
He has a workman's bond, right?
Yes. Yeah, he hires employees.
He hires employees.
And they're his, not ours.
It's a small S. If he's a corporate, small S. I don't think he's LLC. I think it's Sub-S.
Yeah.
But normally, a contract would be written to the corporation in this circumstance.
It's just an odd construct.
Right. So Patty, can you just confirm with him that it's written to the right entity?
Okay.
Aside from that, it's okay by me?
Okay.
Same here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number six.
That's me.
That's you.
Resolved at the Board of Trustees, hereby approve the request from the village administrator to attend the NYMER, the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal Conference in Las Vegas this year. Lucky Patty.
Yeah.
From March 8 through March 11 at no cost to the village.
And it's before the election. I think I could make it.
Come on, come on, let's go.
Is there a second?
I'm a lame duck anyways, what the heck?
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, we are fortunate that Patty is a member of the board of NYMER, which is both...
There's, I think, 13 governors. We represent almost 900 municipalities and their municipal insurance reciprocal. This is a conference that provides continuous education for board members. It deals with our liabilities and the whole nature of reciprocals and risk management. It's actually, it's pretty good. It's pretty good. I went last year, and it was a little eye-opening. It's a whole new area of, you know...
Yeah, she comes back with more things that we can't do.
Study for me, but yeah, we're...
Money we can't spend, things we can't do.
It's actually been a very, the village is really an advantage for me, being on this board.
No doubt about it.
It's very advantageous for all the right reasons.
An honor reflecting the quality of the work you do as well as benefiting the village. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number seven.
So I will take number seven, since I got skipped.
Did you get skipped?
Unless you want to do it.
Go right ahead.
I didn't know you got skipped. I took it from you.
You grabbed my resolution.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Result, the board of trustees hereby approves the following budget amendment from $4,500 from contingency over to parks, repair, and maintenance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on that subject?
What are we doing there?
Yeah, it's a good question. I usually have detail, but I don't. I don't know how that...
Patty's going, darn, Steve has a bad question.
Can we approve that pending Patty's?
It says over budget, that's all. I mean, it's just a...
Can you just get more detail on that?
Oh, you know what? I do know what it is. I'm sorry. I know what it is, because I approved the voucher. We needed to put new fencing up at Nana Hagan Park where the dam is. The fencing alongside the dam's coverts was deteriorating, was coming loose. People were climbing on it, so we replaced that entire section of fence.
And getting into the dam where you're not supposed to be.
Right, you know where the spillway is.
Right, right, right.
So we replaced all, that's what this is for.
You know what? I think I remembered at the same time you did, because I remember seeing it in the check register.
No, it was big, and I'm thinking, why was that? But we didn't have the money in the line items when we adopted the budget, so I moved contingency.
Did we put fairly permanent structures in there for the fencing areas?
Yes. This is all new, small mesh chain link, so the kids can't climb.
Well, what was happening, too, is they had broken open a side of the fencing.
Right, and pull it off on the post.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's still an attractive nuisance, but, you know, we have to do our best to keep it safe.
We have all that signed well, right? Stay off, keep off.
Yeah, it's actually, well, it's signed, but no, we don't have it signed well to keep off at all.
Should we think about that, if we just put a new fence there?
Well, the whole area is, you know, an area that's an attractive nuisance. I wouldn't know where to start and end with signs. We just have to do our best to...
Well, the new fence would maybe be a place. Stay off the fence, period.
Stay off the dam?
Yeah. I want to take a look at what we should do there.
It isn't safe. That's the part of the problem, is I've seen kids try to cross the spillway, which is very dangerous.
Yeah.
They get caught up in that, and they'll be severely injured.
Let's see what kind of signage we could do there.
Yeah, take a look. But that's what that was for.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Just want to report that's the last of our resolutions for the evening. We started the evening with a work session with our Conservation Advisory Council, led by Helen Muir and a variety of other people, but also met with Lisa Brown, Libby Brenner-Schultz, and Edgar Olfsky tonight, representing the CAC regarding the question of wetlands mapping. And that will be a subject you'll hear more about in the coming year. There are a variety of different wetlands maps, including some provided by the state, some done by the county, and a local map that was done by the Conservation Advisory Council back in 1984. It, the maps are not necessarily all in alignment with one another, and our initial step in discussion with Robert Hughes, our building inspector and the CAC, is to take advantage of the county's free offer to take the hand-drawn 1984 map that was done by the CAC and overlay that upon the detailed, scale-accurate maps that the county has that shows not only all the streets, but the buildings that are on them. So that'll be a help to the building department and hopefully to residents to understand what kind of wetland restrictions may already be in place on property they own. And then as we go forward, we'll continue the discussion about what aspects of that data need to be updated as we work with the building department, the county, and with our, the folks of the CAC. So more on that as it progresses. We'll also be talking later in work session about the possibility of a tree ordinance in Pleasantville. Mount Pleasant has recently passed one. We do not currently have a tree ordinance in place, and that's something under discussion. We're taking a look at parking permit and parking meter rates, as well as the master fee schedule, and are going to be taking a look at census data that was provided to us by Westchester County as a precursor to consideration of updating the village's 1995 master plan. So we're going to adjourn our regular session, continue in work session, and then eventually go into executive session on matters of police personnel. What, Judy, would you recommend is the appropriate way to do that, since we're not adjourning directly to executive session? Got an opinion?
I would close it with an executive...
A motion to go into...
A motion to go into an executive session.
Okay.
Well, you could also, you could also close it to go into work session, and then, seeing you're in a public setting, you can reopen it and go into executive session, so the press doesn't have to leave to not hear the work session part. So we can go into executive session.
At any time, you can call them again.
At any time, as long as we're in the public.
But, I mean, you've already noted, we are going into executive session.
Eventually, we're going, but we're not doing it right now, so you don't have to leave, Janine. I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to go into executive session following a brief work session?
As described.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you all. First meeting of 2015. We hope everybody had a good holiday season, and we look forward to a productive and happy New Year. I hope the same for all of you. Thank you and good night.
Good night.